Notice is hereby given that the special meeting of the Southwest Licking Local Board of Education, Licking County, Ohio, on Wednesday, October 30th, 2019, 5:30 PM, in the SWL Board Meeting Room, 927B South Street, Patasko, Ohio, for the purpose of presentations from organizations that conduct superintendent searches and discussion action regarding the process for hiring a new superintendent. Upon request to the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodations for a disabled person to be able to participate in this activity. I'd like to recognize both our visitors here and online. If you will please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are students of the class of 2019 at Watkins Memorial who enlisted in the military.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All right, Mr. Jones, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spender.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zany.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. All right, we have a quorum, we can continue. We need an adoption, motion for the adoption of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second. All right, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spender.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. Okay, that passes. Request to speak on agenda items, Teen Searchers Local 413 and Southwest Licking Education Association. All right, we have superintendent search presentations. Our first is the Licking County ESC in conjunction with Finding Leaders. We are looking for you.
First of all, President Eagle and Board of Education, Casey, I'd like to thank you for inviting us here. I have started up a new arrangement at the ESC and we are in collaboration with Finding Leaders. Finding Leaders is a group that I've worked with over the years, about 12 years as a superintendent, and I find they bring a very solid process. What we're offering tonight is two options. One option would be that the ESC runs the search and Finding Leaders is the consultant. That option, and we do have information available, what I would be telling you is you would spend no more than $5,000, would not pay the fee for any of my time. You would only pay if we had to do the materials we're doing, if we had to pay a consultant fee for something that we felt we needed to bring somebody in to do a better job than maybe what my staff could do. But we would have all components of a typical search, we would advertise it in every way that anybody can, we would have my breadth of experience, which I'm not going to come and tell you that I am Superman, but I'm also not going to tell you that I haven't been around and involved in state politics, involved in the state, and I have a lot of connections. You will have that available to you whether you use Finding Leaders and pay for their full process, which is the quality process, or whether you use us and have consulting. That will be available to you. I also know a little bit about Licking County and the surrounding area. I grew up in Oursall and I've spent the last two years in this county. I know your current superintendent well, and he's talked to me about a lot of the challenges that you've had in your district and the successful ways you've come through them. And so I would bring that to the process whether you use Finding Leaders or us to help find you a good quality. My concern is the ESC superintendent is not how involved we are, it's that one of my districts finds the best person for the job. So without further ado, I'm going to let Steve Farnsworth from Finding Leaders, who also, if I'm not mistaken, is a past superintendent, correct me.
That is correct.
Tell him about Finding Leaders.
Should I hear you speak into the microphone?
Yes.
Please.
I apologize for taking my coat off, it just soaked on the way in, I apologize for that. I am Steve Farnsworth and I started as a teacher many, many years ago, was a high school principal, coach, athletic director, then became a superintendent. I've been a superintendent in four different school districts for a total of 26 years. I also was elected president of BASSA, which is a state superintendents association. And then I was also, after I retired the first time, I was asked to go to the State Department, work with the state superintendent as the executive liaison, which was someone who travels around the state, meets with superintendents, and goes back to the State Department and talks to the state superintendent about what I learned and was able to communicate to the field what was going on at the department. So I've been around, I've been retired now for the second time for about six years, and during that time I've been consulting. And the reason I'm telling you about me is because Finding Leaders has a lot of folks like me, a lot of folks who have been superintendents and have many years of experience, have a lot of connections throughout the state of Ohio. And if you select Finding Leaders, then you have all that experience, all those connections. The important thing to know about a search process is that a successful superintendent somewhere else is not, is reluctant to put his or her name in the hat at an opening. Just if you advertise and say there's an opening in Southwest Licking Local, a really successful superintendent somewhere is not likely to just put his or her name in the hat, because they are successful where they are, and if they apply, they don't get the position and becomes advertised, it's sort of that jilted lover syndrome, where your superintendent looks somewhere else, and then if they don't get it, then they're sort of restrained with their current board. So we do a lot of recruiting, a lot of recruiting, and we talk to a lot of folks, we build a relationship with you as the Board of Education. We've done that all over. We have a lot of folks call us from time to time and say, you know, you did our search way back when, we have a question, and that's all good, we build that kind of relationship. In your packet, there's a blue sheet. Because of the time constraints, I would just like for you to look at the blue sheet now, and I'll talk you through our process using this sheet. And then I would ask you, before you make a decision about who you're going to go with, if you would read the rest of the information in the packet, I think you'll find it very informative. But due to the short time situation, right at the middle of that sheet, it says relationships. That's the most important thing to us. All of us and Finding Leaders have been teachers, we've been in education for a long time. Our mission is to help students. That's what we do. We've done that all our lives, we're still about that. I commend you as an elected representative of this community. You're charged with governing the school district, and that's a big job. And if we can help with that, this is the most important decision that you'll make finding your next leader, and we want to help you with that if we can. So we want to build the kind of relationships with you and with the ESC and this particular partnership. So let's start at the top, it says critical decisions. We have a whole list of questions that we're going to give you, and we're going to meet with you, and we're going to ask you as a board, all these questions. And these questions are going to be things like, what's the salary range that you're looking at for this person? What's the benefit package look like? Do you want someone with a PhD? Do you want someone with experience as a superintendent? Or do these things not matter? How important are they? Do you have internal candidates that you want us to look at? There's a ton of questions. These questions will cause you to think about and talk together about these important issues, and your answers will help us as we build the profile for your next leader. Then we'll go to the announcement. In your packet, there's a sample announcement for the Ottawa Hills School District, which we did do that search, and so we just put that in there to show you what that announcement might look like. The next little circle on the other side is engagement. This is a really important component of our search process. We think that the more this community and the staff are engaged in the process, the more likely it is that the eventual leader will be successful. So we have, everything we do will be, we are going to offer focus groups to you so that, and you tell us how many and who, and we'll be there with a series of questions to ask them that will help you as a Board of Education learn what this community is looking for, what the staff is looking for, what are things that are really important, what kind of a style do you want the next leader to have? And so that engagement process will be something, and again, typically, we'll have focus groups with teachers, and we often suggest that we have a focus group with students. Sometimes Boards of Education are excited about that, sometimes they say, you know, I don't think we need the kids involved at this level, and that's fine, whatever you want to do. We'll have community leaders, we'll have service clubs, those groups, representatives from those groups, and many others. And again, we'll talk with you about what we normally do, you can tell us what works best for you here. Again, I mentioned the recruiting part, and that is a very, very important component of what we do. In the interview phase, Finding Leaders, at the bottom circle there, that FL is Finding Leaders and Board of Education, we will, when we advertise, we get a lot of applicants, we'll recruit, and then a lot of those people that we recruit, we tell them about the district, they will apply. Others may not apply initially, and we'll have to figure out ways to sort of entice them to do that, and we have our ways of doing that. All legal, we will never get you in trouble legally, and we'll never get in trouble legally ourselves. But again, we know a lot of folks throughout the state, and there's ways that we can find out from you if the fit for this particular person works before they even become a candidate. The due diligence part is, we do our due diligence. We know a lot of people, so we'll talk to a lot of people, we'll find out what we can about the candidates. When we get it down to six people that we're going to recommend to you as semifinalists, and that's about six, it might be seven, it might be five, it's whatever works, then you will have an opportunity to interview those. We will not bring you anyone that we haven't yet interviewed. We will interview every candidate that we bring to you. So you will know that before you see the candidate, before you interview them, we will have already done so, and we think that they are a good fit for this district, or we wouldn't bring them to you, okay? And I think that might distinguish Finding Leaders from some of the other search groups. Sometimes they just send you names and say, you know, good luck, we'll interview. We'll not only have interviewed them before they get to you, we'll sit with you during your interview, and we will provide lists of suggested questions for you if you wish to use them. And if you wish to make up your own questions, that's fine too, we'll give you the do's and don'ts about that, because you don't want to ask somebody, gee, you look a little pregnant, or are you expecting, or something like that, you know what I'm saying? Or you walked with a limp coming in, are you okay? You know, some of those kind of things. So we'll help you with the interviews. After those six people, you interview those, you'll do your due diligence, so then we'll give you a list of activities that you can do to find out about each of these candidates. You'll call, we'll give you the information where you can call. Sometimes, we recommend that when you get it down to two, you actually make a visit to their district. You don't have to, that's a recommendation that we make, and we have other recommendations like that that we'll suggest. And then we'll guide you all the way through all of that. So that's the due diligence part. The stakeholder engagement, this is the part that I think is probably the most powerful of everything that we do. I talk about engagement and building relationships, this is really a way to do that. Imagine if you will, after you've interviewed six, you've done your due diligence, you think about, there's two candidates that you have left. And I say two, it might be three, it might be, you might find somebody you want right off the top, but I doubt it. I think you're going to end up with two, that's what usually happens with the districts that we help, they end up with two finalists. So the way this works is, you have two different days, back to back, where you interview the finalists. Before we get to that interview, we will have talked to these people, we will have said, here's, you know, I told you about those critical questions, those critical decisions, you will have answered those, we'll have told these people what the contract's going to look like, what the salary range is going to be, what the benefits are going to be, whether or not there's going to be help with the moving costs, all those kinds of questions that they might have. And we will ask them, before they ever come, as finalists, if you interview and the board says we want you, will you accept the job, given the terms that we've talked about? So that when you get them and you interview them, you can be confident that these last two people are probably not going to change their mind. Now, we don't have them sign on the dotted line, we can't do that, but because they've agreed to it, because they know all of this, it is less likely that they're going to back out. After you've gone through this whole process and you've named them, we've had a case, I had a case once, where I went in as superintendent, the person at the district, it was the Hudson City School District, if you know Hudson, in northeast Ohio, they had named a person, they had advertised that they had hired the person, the person the next day said, I really don't want to take that job. And that's when they called me, and I was working at the State Department, said, would you come and help us, you know, so I did. But anyway, ended up being there six years, so it was fun, it was a good time. But anyway, that's kind of the process, and then the really nice thing about our program, I can tell you about stakeholder engagement. So imagine this room, if we were in the first interview, the first day of the finalist interview, you're at the back of the room, okay? The Board of Education is going to be in the back of the room. At the front of the room is going to be a chair, and that's going to be where the candidate sits, and then we're going to have like tables like this, and we're going to have representative from, business leaders, we're going to have a representative from the students, a representative from the teachers, and then any other groups that you think need to be involved. There are going to be about 10 people behind each of those representatives. The representatives are the ones who are going to ask the questions of the candidate. You're going to sit at the back of the room and listen, you're not going to ask any questions at this particular time, okay? You're going to be able to listen to the questions that they're asking. We're going to give them suggested questions, we're going to encourage them to make up their own, then apply, but we're also going to give them the same cautions that I've mentioned to you, there are things you can ask or things you can't ask, so they don't get in trouble and we don't get in trouble. The purpose of this, it's going to go for about an hour, is you don't have to think about, what am I going to say next? Because you're not going to say anything, you're just going to be able to sit there and listen. And then you're going to watch the candidate's body language, you're going to be able to really focus. And then, at the conclusion of an hour, somebody's going to take the candidate.
Two more minutes.
Okay. Somebody's going to take the candidate, throughout the community, see the buildings, et cetera, and then during that hour, during that hour while they're gone, you're going to be able to interact with these people that are asking questions and the people behind them. What did you think of this person? Would this person fit in our community? Do you have reservations about this person? That's the kind of thing. They're not going to pick the person, we're always going to say, the Board of Education has the final decision, you're going to help inform that decision by your perspective. And then the final thing is the transition, we're going to give you a transition plan in writing, and you can use it or not, up to you, to help the superintendent acclimate to the community and to the school district. If you want us to help further to coach the new person, we'd be glad to do that, there would be an extra charge. You'll see in there that our cost is $14,900, and if we do it, we would not only bring all of our expertise in this whole process that I just told you about, but we also have the ESC that would be there as a resource to help us and to make sure that we have that local flavor that we all know is so important. What questions do you have?
Yeah. Any questions?
I have a couple. How many people currently work at Finding Leaders and would you be our contact if we went with Finding Leaders? And how many people have you actually placed? I guess I was three.
Oh gosh, there's a page in here, it's not a complete list, but it's the most recent ones that we have. If you look at that page, there's a whole bunch of them here. It says Finding Leaders Recent Searches, this page.
Okay.
That shows all the searches that we've done recently, but it does include all the ones that we've done over the years. And there are probably 15 people in the, sort of in the corral for, Paul Pendleton was the one that started Finding Leaders, and he's the one that tells us, and he asked me if I would come and make this presentation, so there I am.
So would you be our contact, or would we have someone else?
I can be, unless what you've heard scares you off, and you say, Steve, we want Finding Leaders, but we don't want you, and that'll be fine. If you want me, I'd be glad to help you, I would really look for.
What was your name again?
My name is Steve, and the last name is Farnsworth, F-A-R-N-S-W-O-R-T-H.
And I want to tell you too, that if you decide you want Finding Leaders, but you don't want me involved, I will not have my post-up. And as I told you before, my concern is that you guys find the best person for this district.
What would you consider the most difficult task in placing a superintendent in a district our size? What's the most challenging that you can?
Well, when a district has a dysfunctional leadership team, that becomes the most challenging part of attracting quality superintendents. I don't see that here. I believe you work together well, I believe your superintendent's well-respected, I think you all work together fine, I understand he's going to be on, continue to stay on and help with the building project, which by the way, congratulations, we're getting that bond issue passed and moving forward with that, that's awesome. So I don't see that as a problem for you. The most challenging thing for us is when there's a dysfunctional board and it's hard to attract quality people who are successful somewhere else, why would we come here and take a chance? But I don't see that as a problem for you. In fact, I think the way you work together would be a real asset.
Do you have candidates in mind? Is there, are there people that you think, oh, I'm already in the back of your head?
Yes. We, yes, we've already talked about it, that if we were to get the search, we have people that we think would probably make, we haven't talked to them.
No, sure, sure.
But we think they would probably be a good fit. Whether they would be interested, I'm not sure.
Other than Reynoldsburg, have you done any searches here in central Ohio?
Yes, there's a couple other ones listed there to try.
Gehanna's on there.
And I also do, I facilitate evaluation, when Board of Education wants to evaluate superintendents and treasures, they ask me to come in and I help them with that. I do that with Gehanna.
Okay.
Steve, you might have to try Valley, which that's been five or six years now.
Yes, yes, yes. But admittedly, most of our people are in northeast Ohio. And so, once in a while, you know, we'll get an invitation to come make a presentation in central Ohio, and when we do, oftentimes we'll get that search and we love to do it. My daughter and her family live in New Albany, so when I do the Gehanna thing, I love visiting my daughter, and it's a great time that I can do that. Yeah, so it's definitely doable. Anything else?
What kind of timeframe do you think of? If the board decided, when do we start this process?
Yeah.
And advertise?
Well, and I haven't said it yet, but I want to say it now, this is your process. You're hiring us, so we're your servants, as it were. We have a, we have a lot of advice because of all the experience that we've had. Most searches take between three and four months. And there's a sample search in here as well with the timeline, and you can see that, and that one started in March, I believe. You don't have to start them, obviously you know already what your situation is, whether you want to get it started right away, or whether you want to wait a little bit. I'll tell you, most superintendents don't start thinking about moving until after the first year.
Can I, can I just put that thing out?
Sure.
From someone who's just been out of the field two years, this is where I'm going to give you ESC advice, whether you want it or not, if you take it, that's fine. Your best bet is to advertise right before the holidays. Make it a window of time, that's a decent window of time, because when you have a short application frame, that says to people, you've already got somebody you want. So make it a little bit longer timeframe, but the sweet spot for collecting resumes is mid-January to mid-February. Now, it used to be like March, but it's moving up and up and up. And so you want, it's like putting a home on the market and saying, it's coming soon. You want them to know before the holidays it's open, and then give them time to think about it, they talk to their wives or their husbands, and then you're going to generate more interest that way. That's just my two cents.
And on the other end of that, you want to be early enough, because, you know, you want to have it all together. And the way we do it is, we tell the candidates that the start date is whatever we say it is, or earlier, depending on their situation, if that works for you, you know what I'm saying? So that's always that possibility as well.
I have a follow-up question, kind of. If we were to work towards that right before the holidays announcement, would all of this pre-work with the focus meetings have to be done prior to then, or can that be done in conjunction with the posting?
So we would like to do the focus groups before we post, excuse me, we would like to do, yeah, we'd like to do the focus groups early, and here's why. We're going to develop a profile of this candidate, so when people start to talk to us about it, we like to be able to tell them what you're looking for. And so that's really kind of what we do. And we're available, so if it works out that you decide to go that direction, we can do that. And we'd have multiple focus groups in a single day, and then we'd come back another day. So we've had as many as 10 focus groups with districts. Any other questions?
John.
When you narrow the list down to say six people, do we, is the board aware of everyone who is applied?
If the board wishes to see every application, you can see every application. Oftentimes, they don't really need to see every application, because we've gone through them all, that's kind of what we do.
Right.
And there are a lot of them that won't be qualified, there'll be people applied from all over the place that maybe have never had any experience as an administrator, and it's, you know, they just don't, we wouldn't bother you with all of those, unless you want to see them.
Okay.
And then you certainly have the right to see them. Okay?
Okay. Good.
If you need to reach me, if I may, I give you a phone number?
Absolutely.
And again, my name is Steve Farnsworth. All right?
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip back.
Thank you. Best wishes to you.
Thank you.
Make a decision. Make a decision.
I'm Cameron, I'm doing it anyhow.
Thank you.
From the diamond right now.
If you can extend it as much as you want to, this is, these are tie, these are tie fades I gave them, but you as a board can pick whatever session you want.
Yep. I'm eating on camera, come on.
Trash can behind you, if you mind the trash can?
Thanks.
Eat more pizza.
I will after meeting.
Looks for dessert.
Derek Queen's open till 10:00.
Okay.
I think Ziggy's has dessert.
They do.
Casey, you good?
I'm okay, thank you.
Work for me.
Casey, you're welcome to, if you have questions, please feel free, okay?
I'm taking some notes.
Okay.
I was coming from close to Indian Lake.
Okay.
Oh.
Wherever you come from, you can't go there.
It doesn't matter. Hi, Casey.
Hi.
Next, we're to East Beach.
Deb Campbell.
I just wanted to, have you met Mark Q?
No.
I've read you.
Thank you very much.
I have.
Certainly, he's met. I've read the list.
Hi.
There's more.
Hi.
John Vince.
Yes, man.
Nice to meet you.
There you go.
Hi. Good, thank you, and you?
Hi.
Roger, nice to meet you. Hi, Deb, Tom Ash.
Hi, Richard.
Tom, Deb.
Hi, Deb, nice to meet you. Hi, Tom Ash.
Hello, nice to meet you, Tom.
10:15.
Good evening.
Good evening. Great, you have about 10 to 15 minutes for presentation, and then we'll give you, we'll have about five minutes for questions, if that's okay?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Try to stay right with Deb.
All right.
So first of all, we'll thank you on behalf of K-12, Deb Campbell, Tom Ash, and we'll be seeing you for a bit of this period. So, a little bit about K-12 Business Consulting. We've worked with a little over 150 school districts in the state of Ohio since 2001. We do a variety of services in addition to searches, five-year forecasting, obviously superintendent treasure searches, program budgeting, efficiency studies, capital planning, salary wage comparisons. Our business is built on word of mouth. We don't advertise, so whatever we get is because people talk about us and it's done organic. Our first superintendent search was in 2001. We've been in this market for 18 years. Last year, we concluded eight searches in 2018, 19. We only do six searches at a time. It's not our goal to try to be the largest search firm. It's our goal to try to do the best searches that we can for our clients. So, we limit that to six searches at a time. We have four searches right now. We closed two down in the last two weeks, finished those up. So we have capacity for a couple of searches. So, this is something you should know about us, right up front, quality. I'm a German, so 100% quality is the most important thing to me. So, I'm the M-O-H-R, period. Project Search Consultants, we tried to get as many of our folks here this evening. I know you need to know who would be working with you. I know that's important to the school board. Kathy Lowry, who couldn't be here because of a family emergency with her husband, but she has 40-plus years' experience. She was superintendent of the Grandville Locals Exam and Dentability Schools. She also worked with BASA in charge of their membership development or professional development. So, she obviously was, you know, networked with a lot of superintendents and assistant superintendents if they're developing and presenting their professional development for superintendents. And I'll let Deb Campbell, who's past president of BASA, introduce herself.
Nice to meet all of you. I am Deb Campbell. I've been in the business for over 40 years. Chris is kind to just put this 40-plus. It's kind to the females in the organization. I'm the former superintendent at Clark Shawnee Local in Clark County. I was there for eight years. Assistant superintendent at Northeastern Locals, also in Clark County. I'm a past president of BASA, which was quite an honor to, because it's voted on by your colleagues, so that was a nice year for me to be able to do that. I worked with Kathy Lowry for five years. We job shared, so I also did professional development for all the superintendents in the state of Ohio. So, it's nice because you know folks, and when you call them, they will take your call. And that's one of the things we pride ourselves on, is really digging to find out about those candidates that we're bringing to you.
Thank you, Deb. Next, I have, oops, Tom Ash. Good evening. By 40-plus years, I'll define that. It's 49 years. I retired the end of September from BASA where I was director of governmental relations. Worked primarily with legislators, but also with our own membership. One of my assignments at BASA, we do annually, at least in the last 10 years, a workshop series called, So Do You Want to Be a Superintendent? My job was to coach the potential applicants, and not just on resumes and applications and letters of interest, but also on the kinds of research you should do about a school district. Matter of fact, I followed my own advice, printed out all that stuff today to take a look at it, just to anticipate the kinds of questions that applicants might have, which is, I think, kind of a unique thing that K-12 brings to the whole search process. Thank you, Tom. And then I am Chris Moore. I have 40-plus years' experience also. I was CFO and executive director of business for Dublin City Schools when I retired. And I'm also past president of OASBO, the state treasurers organization. Why that might be important is because my chief partner in crime was a superintendent. So, I've worked with superintendents all my life, and of course, being in the market for 18 years, talking to folks, routinely reach out to over 200 superintendents and assistant superintendents every year in our search process. So we're pretty familiar with the market throughout the state of Ohio. So, one or more of the folks sitting here today, plus Kathy Lowry, who couldn't be here, will be on your search. Another search consultant that we have is Carol Oxley, who's up in Fremont High. It's a little bit too far to drive. But Carol also is a past president of BASA. So nobody that you're going to talk to has as many, you know, superintendent elected presidents of their organization than our search firm. And the reason why it's important to you is Debbie already said. When folks from our organization reach out, we typically get calls back. And that's important to you too, because we're not a job posting service. We recruit. So I just want to talk a little bit about that as we go on, because if you're not comfortable with that, we're not your company. We find out what you're looking for and we recruit. So, all right. So, one of the things that we want our clients to experience working with us is that this hopefully is an enjoyable and easy process. We're going to do a lot of leg lifting and heavy lifting for you, so you don't have to, so that you can sit back and observe what's going on and engage at the board level, let us go ahead and take care of serving. So, we like to hope, we think, we make it easy. So, the key value-added attributes we deliver is detailed coordination of the search from very first meeting to very end. Staff and community engagement, we offer depending on the level of staff and community engagement that you want. We actively recruit, I'll stress that again. We reduce the risk of surprises, because we do recruit and we know the candidates, okay? So we like those surprises. I know you don't, we don't either. So, prepare a search profile. We'll talk a little bit about that search profile here in just a second. And then we advise the board at the time when you've identified who you would like to hire in terms of competitive wages, we'll work with you to try to seal the deal. We don't walk away at the point that you've identified who you want to hire as superintendent. We stay until it's done. If you need a press release, we do a press release, but we try to get things locked up, okay? We don't just walk away. That's kind of important, because these things can get a little bit loosey at the end of that if you don't continue to drive to the conclusion, okay? We offer you three different levels of searches. I think when I put this together, some Olympics must have been on, to the bronze level, the silver level, and the gold level. And bronze level, and again, you can find that in the document that I handed out, it would be on pages seven and eight of that document. And you can kind of see, there's a little bit difference in terms of length of things that we do for each one. Bronze level is $12,900. The silver level is $14,900. And the gold level, which is the full bells and whistle search, is $17,900. The reason the price is different is because the amount of time we put into the search increases as we go up, depending on what you want. And the reason I came up with three levels to offer clients is because I know not every district wants the same exact search, depends on what you want. So, we've given you the option for that. But regardless of what search that we use, we always develop a search profile and we always do recruiting, okay? So, if you turn to the next page in the document, page nine, you'll see this graph. So, the bronze level search has the least amount of community engagement in it, but it still has engagement. In order to develop your search profile, which would be the first thing that we would do, we prepare a document that we can send out to all of your staff, anybody in the community, any business leader, you know, any local government officials that you want to fill out information about your school district, where we ask them out what are the strengths, the challenges, and what are you looking for in the next superintendent? What this talks about is, we'll be here for a half a day onsite, where we can invite those folks in to talk to us face-to-face. We do learn a lot when we do that. For the silver level, we would be here for an entire day. And for a gold level, we would be here two entire days. So I would tell you that most of our searches fall into silver level to bronze level, only in a few cases do we actually have districts that want a full gold level search because of the amount of engagement that they want to have. So it's usually for larger, you know, larger school districts, but I just want to point out that differences. And then, when we get down to the, you know, candidates, where we identify who you'd like to interview, again, how much community engagement that you want. For the bronze level search, it would basically be, we bring candidates in, once you've decided, once we screen those with you, who you would like to talk to, we would then go ahead and just interview with the board. For a silver level, we would put a meet and greet committee in for your finals. So let's say you interview six people for your initial interview, and you cut the list to three, you know, when the finals come in, they would meet with a meet and greet committee first, and then they would interview with the board. So they kind of work through that process. And then the gold level, you know, each finals gets an entire day, where they would come in at 1:00, start meeting with different groups, one, two, three, four, and then we give them about a 30-minute break before they actually interview with the board. So, that's why I said the full bells and whistle the gold search offers is quite a bit of engagement. And thus, the price goes up because of the amount of time that we have to take to facilitate that.
Chris, may I interject?
Sure.
When we do the silver level and we engage the stakeholders, you get all that information before you have to make your final decision. We tally all that and give it to you so that you can see what your stakeholder group felt about each of the candidates before you actually have to make your final decision.
Thank you, Deb. And we have a six-step process. We kind of started that up on page one, just want to look back real quickly, but what I already did for you is just kind of tell you what the value-added propositions are for that. Step one through five, you know, one, we identified what we're looking for, two, we prepare a search profile, three, we actively recruit candidates, four, we will work with you to do a recruiting report after we've reached out to those folks, and then five, we will manage the interview process at the end of the, at the end of the day. Step six is not something that we wrap into our search process or our price structure, and that is what we call onboarding or goal-setting. Anytime you bring a new superintendent on, we suggest strongly that a board, you know, does that, sit down, talk to them, get the communications worked out, talk about the board goals, the district goals. We know that you may want to work with the ESC on that, you may want to work with OSBA on that. Debbie and Kathy are certified in doing that type of work as well. We can do that, but we know that that may be something you want to do separately, but we do think you should do it regardless of whether it's us or not. So, I'll let Debbie talk a little bit about the calendar and some of the other processes.
Okay, so we want to make it easy. We want to make it fun. A search normally takes three months, because there are all those components that need to take place. So what we did is, we just developed a calendar with some arbitrary dates in it that can always be changed, but just to give you an idea of the parts and pieces that are going to take place. So we have an organizational meeting, which is critical, because we need to make sure all of you know what the process is and have any questions, and everything's answered at that time. At that meeting, we also start working with your treasurer to develop the search brochure. So we do develop the search brochure for you, and I brought what is called our interview notebook. This is what we give every board member the night that you will do your interviews. So the interview notebook will have all of your, and I think Chris might have one also.
It's interesting you chose that. I'm a graduate of Belbrook High School.
Oh, gosh. It was about, it was about the same size as you.
Yes.
So that's why I chose that. But we would, from those community meetings that we talked about, the community engagement, then we would develop a search profile. There is a search profile in your document, and then the search profile will be put into your notebook, so you can refer to it during the interview process. Once we have that search profile developed, then we start really targeting who we are going to recruit. You may already know some folks that you want to recruit. We'll go after them. Lakota's an interesting situation. He told us no about six times before he went to Lakota, looked at the district and said, okay, I'm in. So we're relentless on trying to get the people that you want. We do, like Chris said, depending on the level of search, we either spend a half a day or a full day, or two days here, or one day. Then we recruit. We start recruiting in November. If we secure the search, we recruit till January 16th. And then we have a special screening meeting. Unlike other search firms, we let you see every candidate. We do not feel like it's our right to screen those candidates, it's who you want to see. Now, we will give you recommendations, and Chris, I believe you didn't have. Okay, what we give you, the night that we present all the candidates, you'll go to a secure web portal and see all of them before the meeting, about a week before the meeting. And then we will come that evening with what we call the upside-down stoplight. Green are people we think are a great fit for you. Yellow are really good people. We don't think they're quite as good a fit as green. And red, if you decide to interview them, it's all bets off. Because we know something about them, and we're going to tell you something about them, and if you still decide to interview them, we're going to say, well, you know, we're not guaranteeing that candidate. Basically what we're going to tell you. So that's how we sort of give you our input. Tom and Kathy and I and Chris, we have worked with lots of candidates, so we really work hard to bring you that green level of people that match what you're looking for. Then final interview, we do two rounds of interviews and then final interviews, and then by February 10th, we could have your new superintendent in place and start that transition program. We recommend that you do a separate contract for that superintendent, so that they can come and start transitioning into your district. We want them to meet your teachers, your students, your administrators, so. And then we work with them for about a year as a company. We check up with you and we check up with them to make sure things are going smoothly.
You said you'll let us see the list of all the candidates.
Absolutely.
Is that regardless of level of?
Yep.
Service?
Yep.
Okay.
You see everything.
What we'll do is, we put all of their PDF material up on our website and send you a secure password. And we don't tell you who we think is, you know, and the green, the yellow, and the red. They're just alphabetical. And then when we come to meet with you at the screening meeting, what we do is, we bring our stoplight. Stop, this is very confidential. It also has information on test scores, the report card, Google search information. I mean, we've done the background. We're not the FBI, but.
But you're pretty close.
We've not had any issues with this in 18 years. We'll tell you things, frankly, that you're not going to find on Google anyway. I mean, you know, we have a network of people, treasurer, superintendents, assistants, that we need to find out about somebody. You'd be surprised what the person in the next district knows about you.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? So that's, you know, kind of, you know, part of that. So once you decide who you want to interview, if we have somebody in yellow that you like or you want politically for a reason, want to do an interview, we have that happen, we have that. Then that's fine, it's up to you who you want to interview.
Yeah.
I mean, we're just going to give you our best advice, and, you know, you're the ones that have to make the decision. Also, at that meeting, you saw a set of initial interview questions that's behind each tab. We will send, we will send that information to you in advance of that meeting, so you have an opportunity to see what the questions are, based off of your own search profile. In other words, if you say passing a bond issue or an operating motive is, we're going to make sure we ask questions about their involvement in that, have they ever been involved with that? You know, what was their role, what would they do, things like that. Also, you'll see in there, behind that, the homework assignment. Because our second interviews aren't really so much an interview as they are, they have to do some research on a topic, right here, that would be relevant to your district, that has surfaced out of the search profile and we develop it. And the search profile, I probably skipped over that, it's about the time, but the search profile form actually starts.
But it is a presentation.
If you look at page 14 and 15 of the, you know, of the bound document, page 14 and 15, there you go. This is a two-page search profile questionnaire. We turn this into a PDF document that you can fill and write in, okay? And then we suggest, you know, no matter what level of search, bronze, silver, or gold, we suggest you send this out to all the staff members in the district, anybody in the community that you would like to ask to weigh in on what they, what they think the strengths of the district are, what the challenges are, what characteristics. We get anywhere from, I think the lows we've gotten this. Anybody in the community that you would like to ask to weigh in on what they, what they think the strengths of the district are, what the challenges are, what characteristics. We get anywhere from, I think the lows we've gotten is sixty-seven. In Beaver Creek, I think we got over three hundred and fifty of these back. So that's where we get the information then that starts in the search profile, which is just a couple of pages later, you'll see the title of Lakota. It's a pretty thick document. So that's one of our chief recruiting tools is that search profile. It helps us actually when we reach out to somebody and tell them, hey, we have an opportunity we'd like you to consider and think, you know, based on the information that we have about you or we know you, that this might be a great opportunity. But that answers a lot of questions for a candidate if they're trying to decide whether they think your school district is a good fit for them. Because we basically detail a lot of information, the good, what are the challenges, what are the characteristics? And you can see if you pick any one of those pages, at the top of like the characteristics, you know, the good things, they'll have a consistent theme. So we'll keep the groups separately. When we start hearing the same things from all groups, we move that up to the consistent level.
True.
Okay. Well, I think we're done.
You're good. All right. How about questions from our?
Sorry, I kind of broke the roll. Been asking the whole time.
That's okay. How about anybody else?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
This timeframe that you presented, was that somewhat sort of kind of based on what you, for us? Or was that just completely a sample for you? Okay, so when you say superintendent transition starting in mid-February, how often have you seen a superintendent like accept a position and leave their current position and do that transition mid-school year?
Let me explain what we mean by that. We don't expect the superintendent to leave. What we want to do is get you in the market in January, February. Because that's the time you want to be in the market for, for superintendents. I mean, this is definitely a seasonal thing. We would want them to basically begin to transition there where they may, you know, come in and meet with, you know, the staff, kind of see what you're doing, but not leave their current district typically. That would usually, that would always probably start sometime about in June where they can finish up their. We're not, we don't want to hurt other districts.
Right.
Right.
Doing inside.
We usually have them a consulting agreement for like up to fifteen days. So it can be spread out from February until they actually start the job.
Right, okay.
And you have an ideal situation where you have somebody willing to cover you for an interim from July thirty-one. We saw that, it's like, that's.
Yes, we do.
You can form cases.
She's going to find out, right?
So in central Ohio, you've worked with, Vicgerton?
Yep, twice.
Okay.
And treasures.
Fairbanks.
We don't even mention treasure, Fairbanks. We just want to shoot tense out. That's not treasure.
Yeah, we have a local, we just did their search last year.
Yeah.
And you are local as well. I mean, I know Indian Lake, but.
Yeah, we're, we're located out of, our headquarters in New Alden.
Okay.
So, yeah, this is where we are. Been down here for twenty plus years.
Kathy was in.
Kathy was, just north of Plalis.
North of Plalis. I'm the only outlier.
With that said.
More ways than one.
We have, we have contacts statewide though. Superintendents do tend to, they will move for a job. Treasures typically don't, superintendents will. So that's why the state network really, it, it, it helps that. Awesome. Other questions?
What is the most challenging part of your job when you're recruiting a superintendent, when you're looking for a superintendent?
Most challenging part? Getting somebody that we think would do an excellent job in your search and we think they'd do a great job to see that that's something that would be a good move for them. I mean, I, I will tell you, Lakota, I just gave you a great example. Matt Miller's a fantastic superintendent. He bailed out on us the night before we met the board to do the screening. That, that causes us to get, we actually, he wouldn't return calls to us anymore. So we actually thought, well, let's have, let's have the board president call. And did answer the call for that. He just thought that because somebody was a candidate locally, that this search might be loaded. And we told him, no, it's not. This is not a, we don't do window dressing searches. We don't. That's not what we do. It hurts our firm, hurts you guys. This is not a good thing. But the board president said, no, this is a level plan. He goes, he, he got that. In fact, I think we had to write his name in. Yeah, you'll notice, added and typed. We had to write that in, but we knew that he'd be a good fit and man, he was a great fit. Same thing with Paul at Beaver Creek. You know, we had to hound and hound and hound him to get him to do it. But it's frustrating when we see that. And so I said, we, like, I wanted to emphasize with an asterisk, we recruit.
That's the hardest part. They're comfortable in their job, they love their board, they love their community. But we know you would love them too. And convincing them to take that leap is the hardest part.
When I was at Mid-Ohio Educational Services, I helped boards with fourteen searches in five and a half years. And when I compare with what we're presenting this evening and what I did back then, I would distract what I did back then as a vanilla search. Collected applications, did a search brochure, had scheduled interviews. Didn't try to find a match. And that really left a lot to be desired. As a matter of fact, out of those fourteen searches, the reason there were so many of them, two of the successful superintendents resigned after a year. Obviously not a good fit, but I didn't feel it was my place to make recommendations. So learned a lot from that experience as well. And this particular approach is what attracted me to NCAT. So we care about what we do. If you were to price what we're charging for a search, you'd have to go talk to Hazard Young and it doesn't charge less than about twenty-five thousand dollars. I know that because I fashioned this after a search that they did in Dublin, which they really didn't do the work. I mean, they were from out of state, they didn't know any of the people in the state of Ohio. And I thought, this is just a waste of money.
Right.
And that was a bad, that was, that was a bad search. That person didn't make it two years.
Some people are mostly in their jobs still.
That, that was my, that was, I think, going to bring up the question I was going to ask. Do you have an average of length of, of time that the people stay on the job then?
That seventy-five percent of the jobs that we fill are from people that we recruited. It's not people that just applied. Some of them do.
Okay.
We don't know everybody by answer. And I would tell you that we're probably over five to six years in that. In fact, if you want to know how we do, call Lori Sanders down in Vicgerton. And she's been through multiple searches with us. And she's experienced searches with other firms that have twenty plus years of being on a school board. I tell you, ask her how they feel about Dr. Briggs and Ryan, treasurer.
Pretty low going to the, these treasurers.
I have a follow-up question to your response to Deb's question about the challenge. So experiencing that situation with Beaver Creek and Lakota where you had a last minute, maybe change of heart, have you adjusted your methods at all to like potentially not present someone that's not willing to take the job?
What we have done, it's a good question because we don't like that. When we already talk to you about who you want to interview, get it scheduled, and then they pull out. We hate that. So what we've done is we try to make sure that we know, are you looking at other opportunities? Okay, just did that last night at Northmore Local with the treasurer candidate. And we found out that she was looking at two other places, but we got her to accept this one back out of that. So we needed to make sure that if you hire somebody, they can, they back out of where they're at. Second thing is, we talk to the candidates a little bit more now. When they get called for the second final interview, you know, get them scheduled, make sure they're comfortable knowing where they're coming. But then we like to make sure that they have you talk to your, your wife, spouse, significant other, whatever. Have you checked with your kids? Have you checked? Because that's, those are the two things that stop people from moving. You know, have you talked to your mom, your dad, your, your dog, your pets, your cats? Where it is that you feel you need to know when you come in for the second interview? Because most of the time, we have you prepared with all of their salary data, all the reference checking. Final night of interview, we typically lock, we'll lock a tentative agreement up that night. So we have all that work done in advance as, as a result of that. But we really push them to make sure that, you know, when you get an offer at your final interview, the words we don't want to hear coming out of your mouth is, well, let me check with my wife. I want to see my husband, see if we could, that better all be off the table. So we kind of, we kind of coach people and we just ask them, have you checked?
And I guess I would say we have had candidates that have openly said, yes, I'm going to be interviewing Thursday night at X. And we tell the board that, we know this candidate that you're selecting for a first round interview is going to be interviewing someone else. So you need to decide if you want to give that person a slot or not. So we're going to try to find out as much about the candidates as we can.
And the earlier we start, the less likely it is that would occur, correct?
Well, we did have a, a district that knew the candidate was interviewing somewhere else, still wanted to interview them and chose them for a second round. And they selected the other district before they came to the second round. But they knew it going into it and they wanted to take that risk. So we'll try to.
No surprises.
We're trying to have no surprises.
I don't like surprises.
The case that we know that is, we may have, if you pick six people, we may have a seven alternate that if something happens, that you have a set, if it happens at the right time. I mean, Matt would have left, there's no choice. I couldn't call another person expecting one night notice.
Maybe I missed this, but, or maybe I missed, is there like a limit number? A limited number of candidates that we could do an interview with a specific target?
At different levels of searches, for bronze level, we typically try to shoot for six candidates. For silver and gold, it's usually initially six to eight. That's because we have a little longer lead time to negotiate people and try to recruit to get them to come. So six is usually a pretty good number. I mean, even with eight, by the time you get to that, you're going to be able to drop two or three pretty quickly. Not because they're bad, it's just because you'll find who just works kind of collectively feels like they like. Which is part of the process. And having those people and having more people to talk to helps you.
Are there any ancillary fees beyond the different levels?
Our only cost is, the binders are all included. We include five interview binders for the board, one for the treasurer. Because we usually suggest the treasurer be involved in the interview process. In fact, we usually suggest that the treasurer becomes a search liaison. Give you a title because we have to have somebody here who can coordinate, make sure public meetings are called, you know, all those sorts of things. So our only additional cost is just our mileage back and forth to your meetings. And then I can, you know, we have capped that as well. If I, as long as I know, if you hire us, I can figure out who exactly will be here so I know how far they have to drive, what level of search. Because silver levels take more than bronze levels and so on. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty transparent. You're not going to get thousands of dollars of additional, you know, other expenses.
I would say if you do go with the gold search, there is an additional cost for a meal because you usually take the candidate out for a meal and we don't have that in your price.
If you're thinking about that, I mean, I can tell you, because the gold level search is kind of foreign to most folks. I mean, it, it's a, it's a grueling event for them. That's why we usually don't bring three back. We have a couple of cases, but usually a whole day event, you know, for the candidate that stops their spouse or significant other would come in, maybe tour, see the district, see the schools, you know, where they would shop maybe where they could get a job. And then, you know, candidate interviews, then we go out to eat dinner. You know, it's, it's an eight, eight-hour event for them. Okay, but that's not something that we pay for. Also.
We do pay for the alcohol.
We do. That's, that's all.
That's if you can't.
There you go.
Right.
Because you can't. The treasurer won't let you.
That's called the Troy City School at different.
There you go.
And they say like, well, you can't pick your guys. Ah, so that's a standard now. So, um, but, you know, you learn a lot and that's called the informal interview. Right after your formal becomes the informal, your spouse, your kids, or whatever. Literally all are advised to exceed the package. But again, that's a much more involved process, you know, for that. But again, even with that, the food, you know, pizza, I like seeing this. Whenever we do interviews, we usually have food for the board. Like it to have just pizza in the room makes people feel comfortable. The minute I saw that, I said, it's all right. I'm like, even if you smell something that's burning, I like it. No, it just makes you feel home.
Right.
I mean, you know, all the Vicgerton interviews is almost like a buffet in their boardroom. I mean, literally. But it makes people feel comfortable, you know, so you just find out who they are, which is what you're trying to find out. So.
Right.
He takes a pizza, you know what you do?
Yeah. It sounds really good. Yeah, it is, it's good.
It's good.
All right. Any more questions?
Thank you, guys.
Anybody?
Feel free to, if you have anything else, let us know too.
Thank you.
Invest a lot to you. We'd like to work with you, like ask for your business, but if you decide elsewhere, we wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I want to show you my latest assistant's log to you.
Thank you. We would, yeah, that would be the only thing we would have.
Favorite, heard of great.
Assistant superintendent is going to be.
He's a rapper. Anyway, that's what I do for a time. We, we, I have to care.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Well, it's nice to be home.
Nice to meet you.
All right, thanks. Thanks, thank you.
It's nice to be.
Thank you. You shouldn't complain. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Here's your Belbrook book back.
I will need that sometime.
Such a small world.
Isn't that something? I just pulled that because it's had close to the same number of students as you and I knew the total was bigger, so, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Watch out for all the rain.
Many people say they get paid to sit in the hall.
Yeah, you're right. I appreciate it. Great, I'm letting it go a little long.
No, that's fine. That's your problem.
I think we need to.
Yeah.
People work and do what they want.
We don't see, we don't see another group anywhere but in the parking lot.
Oh.
Watching the security put it outside.
Oh, so the other one's not here yet, huh? Were they supposed to be here at six-thirty?
There is quite a lot of traffic on three-ten heading towards.
Yeah, traffic is awful right now.
Backed up all the passports. So they were coming from Newark or something.
There's a lot of accidents.
Thank you.
I don't know, like, my phone, my phone.
Like you're in the board meeting.
That's why I said, I'll, I'll go check it quick.
Go check.
I haven't seen the email yet.
Do you want me to adjourn?
It's up to you. You're, you're, you want to start talking. If you want to start talking about the first two, it's up to you. It's what you want to do.
I want another piece of pizza.
Yeah, I'll adjourn.
It's adjourned.
Going to recess.
We're going to, yeah, okay. Do I just say we're in recess? We have to call order or call the roll first?
No, I'm just saying we're recessed.
Okay. We're in recess at six-thirty-nine. We're in recess at 6:39.
We're returning from recess at 6:54 PM. Mr. Jones, we call the roll please.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zany.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here, we have a call and we can continue. We have superintendent search presentations. OSBA is here for presentation. You have about 10 to 15 minutes for your presentation and then about five minutes or so for questions.
Okay, you guys are putting me under the gun.
I know.
I hear two of them walking down the stairs.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Great, well, thank you so much for having me here. What I want to do is speak to this handout. You can see inside of your packet. The rest of what's in there is a lot of information. What I did was I took the proposal that is in your folder there. And I broke out what I think the high points are that I really want to speak to you tonight. And so that's what's in here. So I'll speak through this. Really, as I go through this, what I'm really highlighting in this handout presentation that you see are the five steps that we look at when we go through a superintendent search. Those are the big landmarks. These are the milestones that we work for as we work through the process. The process typically takes about three months, but that's highly customizable depending on what your needs are. So I'll say that. And in fact, as we talk through the steps, and these are probably very familiar to other search firms as well. We do go through a process when we start where we develop a profile. Where we meet with the board and say, okay, what's most important to you? What do you need with your superintendent? What are the issues that we're looking at here? And what do you want to accomplish in the next three to five years as you look down the road? So that's the initial conversation. We spend a lot of time working with stakeholders and focus groups, getting input from them and share back. I think that's one of the biggest golden nuggets of working yet is the information we get from those focus groups. Getting ready to do those in a couple of weeks with the district that I'm working with. That leads us all into step two where we get into really recruiting. Now at this point, I would say as a board, you're letting us do the work entirely at this point. As we're getting around there, we're talking to candidates. We're working, building a pool, a pool. We want a big pool. We want it to be broad and deep. There's many candidates as we can get for you to look at. And we want it to be diverse, although what we focus on throughout is that criteria that we talk about. Did we learn from focus groups? What did we learn from, you know, working together as a team and looking at the district? And we also utilize, as you'll see in that step two page, this page, where we talk about NAS. It's the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers. There are 48 other states that have associations that do the search work like we do here in Ohio. And we're a very tight work alike group. And so we work very closely with them throughout the country. We really value that association we have with NAS. Applying into step number three, this is where the board starts to go through. When we get to screening. And this is where I could talk about a new tool. Well, actually, it's not new for us, but it's taken on a new format here recently in this last year. When I started working with OSBA about six years ago, there was a shift to get away from paper files. We would have a big banker's box full of files, the candidates. And if we had, you know, 25, 30 more candidates in a pool, that was a big box. And some of those files over time would get thicker and thicker and thicker. And it was a lot of work to go through. I remember our screening meetings that we had as we looked at candidates for searches were sometimes three, four hours long because it just took that much time to go through the files. And it was difficult for boards to have a good look. And boards more and more were constantly just pushing back and saying, you know what? We need a better look at our candidates because they may agree. So we developed a system that was online. People would apply online. We would keep their profiles, all their information online. We had the ability to open up a portal for each one of the board members to go in ahead of our screening meeting that we would have together. Or each board member has an opportunity to go in, look at each candidate. We feel very strongly that as a board, you have the right to see every candidate in the pool. We don't withhold anybody. We don't make value judgments for you at that point. But we do look at it internally ourselves. We put together committee of screeners. Our fellow screeners that we use are outside people. Most of them are retired administrators, superintendents. And we have a big enough list of people that we work with that know our process. We trust them. They're knowledgeable. They can look at your geography and try to have people that really know this area of the state looking at candidates. And so we walk through the process of evaluating the candidates. We ask you to do the same thing. Come together at a screening meeting. We meet, we work with the candidates. Say, okay, here's who we like. Who do you like? And we come to a meeting of the minds. Who are the best candidates based on the criteria to move forward into the interviewing process? Then we work very closely in step four, the candidate evaluation, where we work with you to develop the interview tool. How are you going to interview these candidates? What are we looking to learn from the candidates in the first round? It's really more about, we just want to find out who these people are, make an evaluation so we can add that pool down to finalists. Once we get to finalists, we usually, and this is at board's discretion, there are lots of different formats that we look at for the second round where we can involve stakeholders. It's an opportunity to bring staff, community into the process. And we've done it a number of different ways. Many times I have facilitated community forums. You have the opportunity to come in and ask questions you want of the superintendent. And I would facilitate that. And it gives people a chance to see those candidates and be able to give you feedback. And there are various ways boards want to do that. But a lot of boards say, you know what, this is important. I did have a district two years ago that I worked with. The previous searches were never done with the community. It was just the board doing their work. Well, they were getting a lot of feedback as they went into this search. And I even heard it in the focus groups where they said, you know what? We really want to be a part of this. We haven't been in the past. We think we should have a right to be able to know the candidates and be able to offer our input. And the board heard that. So we opened it up to the community. And the nice thing about it was after the fact, we heard from many people who said, this was nice that we had the opportunity to weigh in, to give our input because we haven't had that opportunity in the past. So, you know, a lot of boards have themselves in that situation. And that sometimes determines how you want to move forward. But that's one of those very customizable things that we do. The other part of it that we do with the finalist candidates that I want to speak to, and this is exclusive to us. We have a very highly qualified scientific tool that's been used in corporate work for a long time. Ironically, in my corporate work before I came to OSBA, we used this tool for everybody we hired. And it's an assessment. It's a personality work style assessment to give you a picture of how does this person work? Are they more assertive? Are they more laid back? Are they more organized or less organized? Do they like collaborating with other people? Do they like working on their own? You get to see them on a continuum across all those different categories. And again, it's very inaccurate to what they take or to the way they actually work. So it's a great lead for you guys. And we use that as a tool to help you evaluate. We also feel very strongly that those candidates need to be vetted further than what's in their materials. So we as an association will also provide you with a list of references and help you with working through calls to learn even more about those candidates. So that when you come down to that final process, step number five, the appointment, that you have the candidate that's going to fit. The other thing I really want to point to is there are two things on this appointment page that I want to speak to. One is our guarantee. Because it might happen. I can't say that it hasn't happened, but it's pretty rare that a board gets to that final decision point and really is not moved by any of the candidates. Nobody has really separated themselves. They're not sure. And it might be that you want to reopen the search. And if that needs to be done, we will definitely be there for you. Because our guarantee is very simple. We are not about to walk away until you have the right person in your seat. I'll also point out that last year, I assisted a board in a new search because we had a situation where treasurer who was hired, this was actually treasurer's search, got a job in his hometown. The position opened up. It's where he really wanted to go. He took that job and he kind of left him in the park. And so I reached out to him and said, you know what? We just did this search the year previous. We need to reopen it. I'll come in and help you through that search. So we did that. And that's just part of that guarantee that we want to be here. I think the bottom line is, we're your professional organization. Our whole job is to support you as a board. And we take that very seriously when we talk about searches. The other part of it is, and I wish more boards would take me up on this, but when a new superintendent is put in place within six months of that start date, we'll come back and have, let's get together and communicate meeting. We've done those kinds of meetings before. And they're valuable because it allows you as a team to talk through what's working, what's not working, what do we want to see improve, what's going well, those kinds of things. And to come to a better understanding as a new team, we would hope. So that's something that we also do. And so the last part, I will just reiterate when it sets this apart. These are the things we feel very strongly about the board can do. One is, we feel very strongly about our searches. We've been doing for over 40 years now and over 1,000 successful searches. It suffices to say that through OSBA's history, we've worked with every district in the state on either a superintendent or treasurer's search. NAS gives a tremendous connection nationwide of potential candidates. We are here to support you through the interview process. The Achiever is a tremendous tool to help you evaluate your candidates. Rivalis is wonderful. It's evolved now to a tool that is so nice to use. It's so easy for you to go in as a board member to look at each one of the candidates and to be able to see all of their information in a very concise, organized way. It just allows us to be supportive about how we go about evaluating the candidates. And then the leadership workshop, which is a big plus as you get started as a new team. That's my spiel. I hope I stayed in my time limit. And so with that, what questions have I written? What do you have for me?
I see for your price, it's $8,500. In addition to that, what kind of expenses should we expect?
Typically, it's mileage. The search itself is designed for the consultant to come into the district four different times. Those are typically planning meeting with the board, focus groups with your stakeholder groups. Sometimes that becomes a second trip into the district depending on how those work out and scheduling and who you want to meet with. Screening meetings, that's where we definitely meet and working together. And then like I said, oftentimes, usually that short time into the district is to facilitate the second round interviews. If there were extra trips in there, that would be on a per day charge. But other than that, usually those extra expenses are just the mileage.
Okay.
To act for the consultant. For you guys, fortunately, that's pretty minimal. It doesn't count time. Any other questions?
So would you be our contact or is the contact somewhere, contacts somewhere in here?
No, I would be your contact.
Okay, you would be contact.
I would be the lead consultant. It also suffices to say that we have three consultants that do searches. So there's my colleague Terry and Cheryl that also lead searches. And on any one search, we always know the other consultants are doing the other consultants. I have actually had to study them as well as, I'm going to be Terry or Cheryl at different times, you know, because of circumstances to help out with the search. So we're always able to do that. I guess with that said, you have a lead consultant. You've got the other two consultants. There's two of the next rate of assistants that assist with all the background stuff that happens. And the other part of that too is you have the backing of, you know, the legal department, communications department that helps us develop the brochure to help us get the information out there for the search.
How many searches will you be working on within the next six months?
Hard to say at this point. I have one going right now.
You have one going right now.
Yeah. We typically, as an organization, do anywhere from 15 to 20, maybe 22 searches a year.
Okay.
Of superintendent and treasurer. But between the three of us, we've never had an issue where we felt like we were over or out of our capacity. Go ahead.
I'm waiting for Deb's question that she asked.
What do you consider the most challenging aspect of finding a superintendent?
That's a good question. Typically, suffice it enough, not finding candidates. We feel pretty good about the pool that we put together for districts to look at. I think the most challenging part is making sure that we are coordinating with the district and your stakeholders when it comes to focus groups, getting those together, really making sure that they're well publicized and that people are here for those. Because obviously, the more people are there, the better. And the second round interviews, we're involved. There's a lot of coordination and work that has to be done there. But, you know, having said that, those are the two parts that I really, I enjoy searches very much, but I love that part where I'm engaging with stakeholders too. Because it allows me to be a little closer to the district and to learn a little bit more about who's in your district.
Have you worked with any other districts in central Ohio recently?
Recently, I have not, no, personally. I've worked with districts in the northeast and the southwest. And then two years ago, I seen the more in the northwest than anywhere else.
Okay.
Does OSBA do any sort of recruitment? Or are you fielding mostly like applicants when the position's posted? Just reviewing what comes in? Or are you actively going out to search for applicants or candidates?
It's kind of a hybrid approach. The one thing we do not do as an organization is cold call candidates. We do not act like a headhunter firm in terms of, oh, I know this person over here. I'm going to call them and see if they might be interested. We have a lot of candidates out there that we know are actively seeking. Candidates come to us on a regular basis and say, hey, I'm looking. You know, where are you looking? Oh, but central Ohio or in this area, we know about those candidates. And so we definitely call on that. We talk to candidates on an ongoing basis. We have a very deep database, as deep as anybody in the state in terms of our contacts and reach out to potential candidates. And the one thing that I really dislike in search processes, I'll just say this, that oftentimes those calls will go out and the conversation that's on the other side of that is, I'd love for you to apply for this search. If you apply, I'll get you an interview. As a consultant, I would never presume that. Our attitude is that this is your search. This is your decision. We never supplant our ultimate judgment or decision over the boards. So if I say, I really like this candidate, and you say, no, we really don't, I go with your opinions and thoughts on that. The other thing I'll say, and it's in the handout as well, we feel very, very strongly that we don't search for candidates. We are not in the business of finding jobs for people. We're in the business of working with boards and supporting and facilitating with them through the process. So, yeah, we do recruit, but we don't do it in that very overt, you know, cold calling method.
And you will allow us to see everyone who applies?
You see everyone who applies. Whether they're qualified or not, you see them.
What kind of timeline would you propose for our search?
Well, a typical timeline would be, we like to allow four to six weeks for the recruiting period. And then it's typically, after that, it's probably a couple of weeks leading up to doing the screening, doing the scheduling, then the first round interview. So there's usually two, two and a half weeks in there. There's another probably two to two and a half weeks between first round and second round because there's the achiever. There is the reference calls that we put together for you guys to make for the finalists. And then there's, again, scheduling and coordinating, you know, whatever that process is that we want to do for the second round. When it's all said and done, it's typically about three months.
When do you want, when do you think we should be advertising? What months?
Well, the real search season starts in January. So one of the things that may be an advantage right now is you have the ability to advertise before the holiday break, actually get it online and have that position out there. Which I think is an advantage because you're getting a jump on a lot of search movement that'll start happening in January. But my advice always is, let that recruiting go through January. Or at least well into January because that's when most people are looking. That is the season. When people are thinking about changing, moving to a new location. Maybe I want to become a superintendent. I'm looking. That's the time that people really start considering that. So that is applying time.
Was that your question?
Any other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch either way. Let's, I'm not sure when the board makes a decision. It may not be so right up at board meeting.
Okay.
But either way, I'll let you know.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Nice seeing you again.
Great to have you here.
Sorry that your drive here was longer than your presentation.
That's okay. I'm just glad that I got here and you guys were here.
Say hi to Kim Power Smith-Forrest.
I sure will. She told me that she saw you recently.
Yeah.
I will definitely do. But thank you again. You guys have a great night. And if you have any questions for me, you've got my card.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And good night. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have discussion action regarding superintendent search presentations. Does anybody have, want to start off with thoughts on one direction or another? Anybody have any thoughts?
I have thoughts.
I have lots of thoughts. Okay. Mrs. Spindler, do you want to share your thoughts?
I liked the first and the last group the most. I don't know that the middle group really saw the person, I don't, I guess it was just, it didn't feel personalized to me. I don't feel like they know our district or did any advance. I shouldn't say did any because they obviously did do a lot of advanced research. But I just, I don't know. Maybe it's a feeling. I liked with the first group, I liked the actual finding leaders more than just the consulting portion of it. I really liked the idea of them kind of making sure that if a position was offered that they were going to accept at the end, at the final end. That seemed to carry throughout. I guess I have reservations about the last group. I don't know. I feel like I need to stop talking at this point. Those are my gut feelings.
What was the first group? Was that?
Finding leaders.
Their fee was, what, $8,700 plus the $5,000 or?
No, theirs was $5,000 if the ESC was a lead and they just consulted. If we just used finding leaders, that was the $14,900.
Okay, yeah, I was a little confused on that. So $5,000 if ESC would lead it, so.
I think what I was trying to get to ultimately is all three groups presented something in my mind except what we want. I think OSBA has the best price tag, obviously. But there were some holes there too. It seemed like, or maybe it was just the feeling of a rushed presentation. It just didn't seem like as cohesive, as a complete timeline presentation of exactly what they would do. I know I'm all over the place here with this, but.
It's okay.
With the other two, I felt like it was more complete package as far as what was presented. I don't know that that's actually not what OSBA has, but I didn't see that in that presentation. My, the thing I liked about OSBA is the price tag. And I don't think that what was missing, I think with follow-up, we might still have that. I guess is what I'm getting at. Those are my initial comments. I'm gonna not talk.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go a different way. This is just for me. I like the middle group. And the only, because I think all three of them are basically the same service. Engagement with the stakeholders. I'm, you know, the first round interview, second round interview, you know, all of that. Virtually the same service. I like the idea of recruiting the best candidate. Yes. Whether or not that candidate knows he wants to be here yet or not. And that's what I liked about the second group. Meaning actively seeking out the best candidate. Not just waiting for someone to fill out an application. That's what I liked.
I do feel like the first group offered that recruitment piece as well. I don't think that that's the answer that OSBA gave when I asked that question.
Right, right.
And maybe just in talking, I'm kind of switching my gears here. The issue I had with the second group is I couldn't focus because there were multiple people talking at the same time and I found that very off-putting. And maybe that's just a pet peeve of mine with interviewing and, but anyway.
I was not a fan of the first one. To me, they seemed, their answers seemed inequated. Seemed kind of old for some reason. I don't know why, but it just, it just kind of hit me as inequated. I liked K through 12. I liked the second one. I like the fact that they had some different percentages. 75% are filled with the people that they know would fit within the district. And then that out of that 75, they said the majority of them are at five plus years on the job. I like the fact that they're recruiting people that stay and not a, well, we got somebody to fill the position and they're gone in a year.
John?
All right, so I liked the second group the most. Probably the biggest reason I liked the second group was the recruiting aspect. I thought that was being a little more aggressive as opposed to, well, let's just see who sends stuff in. I like that. Um, I like that because they seem to me sincere about getting to know us and getting to know what we wanted. And then they would take that to help them with their recruiting, um, or, you know, just whoever were to submit an application, whether they recruited them or not. I felt like they were pretty thorough, I liked that they were local. Um, I liked that, you know, Pickerington has used them twice, they seemed, the first group seemed very northern Ohio oriented. Um, and I also got the feeling that it was just kind of, um, it, I don't know, it just didn't feel right to me. Um, and I'll be honest, I'm not real excited about the ESC being involved in our process at all. Um, I feel like we are elected to, um, make this decision by our community. And, um, I just feel like we need to have that entity separate from this process. So I did not care for number one. Um, number two was my favorite. Number three, um, I could live with, I know we've used them in the past, but, um, you know, maybe it's time to try something new. That's just where I am in this and kind of my thoughts.
Roger, you have anything?
Well, I can piggyback on John, I liked the second group probably the best of the three. I think any one of the three could do the job. I mean, yeah, we're still going to get who we get and we're going to decide who we accept, that's the bottom line. But I don't know, the, the group two seemed to be more of going out and getting the person that we need versus the others maybe. And I don't mind the ESC getting involved because I know Dale knows a lot of people and knows our district and what, what we're up against and stuff. But anyway, I would, the second group I think would be my first choice and then, but I can live with any of them.
Mrs. Perkins, do you have any things?
I do. Um, I thought the second group was a little aggressive in their, um, presentation and their timeline. Um, not that we couldn't, you couldn't choose them and, you know, alter the timeline, but I think that kind of what they presented may use some potential good candidates based on just what I've seen historically and what the other two groups said for when posting and when it's kind of the high time for superintendents. So that was a little bit of concern. Um, I think they had the best polished presentation, but I kind of felt a little bit like Kathy for some reason, something just felt a little off to me. I can't quite peg what it was. Um, I mean, I agree with Roger, I think any of them are going to do a great job. Um, if you choose a second, I do think we should consider a little bit that timeline. I'd be mindful of that to attract the best candidates. Um, if I had to pick a choice after them, I would pick the, um, OSBA.
Couple things that we could top one time. You said you weren't, didn't want to make a decision tonight, but it's up to you as a board, you want to make a decision tonight or do you want to wait? Our next meeting's not until November twenty-first. If we want to try to get things done right before the holidays, that's going to be a push. Get done by less than a month to get everything ready, so.
And that, and that was, that was also my biggest concern was having all those focus groups prior to the, that, the posting, which needed to be prior to the holiday.
Yeah, what, what are your thought, what are, I mean, you guys have sort of been through this. I mean, obviously, I think we want to get it posted in January, correct? I mean, isn't that the, isn't that the realistic?
They said January's when we're searching, so two of them said.
Two of them said before the holidays, right? Which means we, we truly do need to get the focus.
I feel like, I think the first and the last one said that.
The middle one said, because they had it in November, they had those things in November, right?
Yeah, they had the window open for.
Oh, you're right.
So I think everybody was really before the holidays.
Yeah, so all it was, I mean, if we want to try to push that kind of timeline, sooner we make decisions, the better.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean we can't adjust the timeline, like Casey said, but all three of us says we should get it marketed in January.
Yeah.
People need to know this late December, early January that our positions open.
Right.
I was just concerned that before the holidays, that Kathy was saying that I'm worried that we'll have the type of turnout we want to participate and to have a, you know, to be active in the search. That's, that's whenever we post it, I just think having those actual groups as they're talking about.
I love, I love the community group and focus group. My concern with this timeline would be getting people to come to meetings between now and, and before, that's a six-week window to get people, which is fine. It's on them if they're not involved. However, I would still, it's kind of like the athletic facility discussions, I would like as many people to have input as possible.
Correct.
And, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm great with the timeline as long as we can advertise and get them out, you know, push the meetings and get the people involved that we would like to see involved. Um, teachers and students if we, if we go that way.
Rick, this may cost you another meeting, but could we do a special meeting prior to November twenty-first? Because personally, I would like to have a little time to digest the information we were given, just to do my due diligence.
Do a little research.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I mean, I have no problem with meetings. You, uh, obviously we can't set it tonight because it wasn't part of the meeting notice to set a special meeting. But if you can, do you have a ballpark of dates you're thinking of?
I just need a few days to read through this.
Uh, I, well, can I add something on there, John?
Yeah.
First thinking, because, and maybe, I don't know if you guys would want to do this or not.
They all have references.
They all have references, maybe we each like call a reference from each to see how their search went.
Now, I don't think OSBA had references.
Yeah, they did.
They did, I didn't see that.
Um, if we each take three, we're going to get a pretty good idea, like one from each group, we're going to get a pretty good idea of if people liked it or not. And maybe we can, you know, so we know that we're, we're comparing apples to apples, maybe we can each pick three and then have like three, the questions, identical questions that we ask them. So as a superintendent, you know, what was your experience? Uh, is your superintendent still employed? You know, what were, I don't know, we can come up with questions.
Okay.
Does that sound, so you guys want to make vocals?
I'm fine with that, should we make questions tonight in our meeting?
I think we should probably make it outside the meeting.
Right.
Right, so we need to do that, correct?
Yeah, it would be nice.
But that's within the realm of this meeting.
That's part of the, the thing with the process of hiring superintendent.
Can I just?
The process is probably, that's what it is, how you want to do it.
Can I just pause that conversation super quick? Um, I know that I was the only one out of the five of us that may have felt a different way on, um, things. So please know, I mean, obviously you know that I'm one of five, so.
Well, but we all call and we all, you know, we hear from different, it comes back that people didn't have a good experience, I mean.
And, and, and listening to everyone else's comments, I do hear a lot of what you're saying. I think my biggest holdup with K-12 is one of the specific people that was here, so.
Yeah.
Just involve the team that would be involved with us directly contacted, it just was overwhelming.
I think if, if we each call one from each group, that's five from each thing.
That's a lot.
That's a lot of references, right? And I, probably the smartest thing is to call the closest schools, right?
Yeah, we already started those.
So, you know, the, what is, OSBA has got Westerville.
They have Delaware Area Career Center, Olin Tangi.
Westerville, Zanesville.
Westerville, Zanesville, that's the only ones I.
Olin Tangi, I have Julie Fiesel's, um, email address because I'm, she was my mentor on OSBA a while back. I can contact her.
Knox County is not too far away.
Well.
Where are we at?
Neither is River Valley.
OSBA.
Okay.
So there's six or seven right there.
How am I not finding that?
I'll call Westerville City.
Candy, where did you find that?
In the back someplace.
It's on the second file folder.
Some place in here.
I'll call Zanesville.
I don't know, maybe you didn't get it. Oh, here, here, there it is.
Oh, okay. Good lord.
I'm like, I don't know, I found it in that folder somewhere.
So for OSBA, who are we calling?
I've got Olin Tangi.
I got Westerville. I have Zanesville.
And Zanesville, so you can call Delaware Area or Knox County.
And River Valley is Marion too, that's not too far.
Yeah, River Valley too, one of those. You just pick one of those and call them.
Who are these contacts, are they board members?
They're board members.
Just tell me one, I don't care.
Call a River Valley local.
River Valley local.
Yeah.
Roger, you want to call the Delaware Area Career Center or the Knox County Career Center?
Is that for the, uh, OSBA?
Uh-huh.
Uh, let me see, Delaware Area Career Center, and what was the other one?
Or Knox County, one of those is fine.
Knox County.
Oh, oh, they, that's only, those are little, those are pretty small.
Well, maybe not those then, how about, how about one that's exactly the size of ours, let's see.
Madison.
Loveland City is four thousand four hundred eighty-one.
There you go.
Okay. Adjust, Roger, how about Loveland City Schools?
Next.
It's not so bad.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, what are we looking at?
It's on page, um.
Page twelve?
K-12, page six.
How are we going to record all this stuff?
I think of the special meeting.
And we're gonna, we're gonna come up with questions here in a few minutes.
Hopefully I'll be there.
I'd like to call Lakota.
Yeah, you want me, I'll call Pickerington?
Now, I don't know if you wanted me to, but the lady, um, the book that we got was from the district I graduated from and I still know some people there.
Why don't you call that district?
Okay.
And even though they're not on the reference list, that might be a tricky one.
I actually have a contact person at Lakota, it's not this person, but she works in, in the district.
That's good.
Um, I would like to call her, if that's okay.
Yep. I will call Belbrook.
Um, I'll call London.
Who, Casey, do you know the sizes of those school districts? Is there one on there that's the, about?
I don't know, I can't, no, I'm sorry.
Washington Courthouse is semi-local, but it's small.
Washington Courthouse is.
Beaver Creek or Springfield might be closer.
Springfield might work.
Springfield, Roger, do you want to call Springfield?
There's actually two Springfield.
Okay, which one are we on?
The, uh, K-12, the K-12 book on page six.
Six. Six, who is it, I'm sorry?
Um, Mr. Ed Leventhal at Springfield.
Mr. Ed Leventhal, Springfield.
John, who are you calling?
Uh, Belbrook, they weren't on the list, but that was, and they had just done that search.
Gotcha. Where's that district, John?
Next to Beaver Creek.
Or Dayton, right?
Yeah.
And then Binding Leaders, right?
Wait, I only have, I have Lakota, Belbrook, London, Springfield.
Pickerington.
Pick.
I'll do the Pickerington.
All right.
I've got the big schools, Olin Tangi, Pickerington. Um, this one we've got.
Oh, we, okay, we want to do Reynoldsburg, right? Reynoldsburg, Hannah Jefferson and Buckeye Career Center are the local ones, but Buckeye Career Center, that's probably pretty big. Isn't it the big one here for Columbus City? Not Columbus City, they'd be their own.
No.
I would, I'd like to call New Philly. Because I know somebody from New Philly and they've watched some of the things they've posted.
And I know Joe from Reynoldsburg, but I don't know, he's kind of busy running for mayor.
The superintendent at Reynoldsburg is running for mayor?
He is.
No, Begany is their board president.
He's also running for mayor?
Yeah. But if you want, I can call Reynoldsburg.
That'd be cool.
Okay.
I can call Hannah if you want me to.
How about, um, isn't Frederick Town's pretty close, right? That's up in Mount Vernon. Isn't Nor, North Union also semi-close? It's a seven-four-oh.
Yeah, that's close, right?
Isn't, is that a little more?
It has to be, yeah. Oh, Marysville, right?
That is Marysville, isn't it?
Marysville is in, in Lakin County.
No, no, but it's up past Delaware in a seven-four-oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll call them.
Okay.
This has to be really fun to watch on TV.
I know.
What are they doing?
How many of you are? Need Roger.
Okay.
Roger, did someone mention Frederick Town?
Yeah, you want to, Roger, do you want to do Frederick Town?
Uh, if I can find it here, Frederick Town, local schools.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's really close, right?
Oh my goodness, now I have to write questions.
Yeah, now we have to do questions, guys.
I had a couple I thought of.
What, what was the one you said first?
Sorry, I'm just, I'm still, we have Reynoldsburg and Hannah, Frederick Town, who else?
North Union.
North Union.
And New Philadelphia.
Okay.
Okay, and what are our questions, what were they done?
I just, I don't know.
Something was, how long was your, how was this, how did the search go, right?
Yeah, share your experience with whatever company.
Would you be recording these since it's submitted?
Yeah, I'd be here with our recorder, I'd make sure they're saved. As part of that first one, do you want to use that old, would you hire again comment?
Would you, yeah, share experience and would you, and would you hire again?
Why or why not?
Well, my second question, I said, what, what did you not like about this? About the company?
Can we ask who specifically you worked for, with? Who was your direct contact person?
If they, if they remember, we don't know how long these are.
That's true, but most of these presentations.
If it was a long time and they remembered, then.
They, they have forty-plus years of experience.
Okay, who was your direct contact?
All right.
And what, I said, is your superintendent still there and how long have they been there?
Okay, so what's question two, I'm sorry.
Uh, what did you not like about the company?
Okay.
Is the superintendent hired the same one that you have presently?
Yep.
And if not, did you utilize the same company in the search in between? Maybe, no?
Presently, I like that, if not, did you use the same company again?
I mean, that kind of gets to the would you hire him again?
Is that enough?
How about, um, what was the most challenging part of working with this company? Kind of along the same lines of Deb's question, only from the, I guess, owner's standpoint?
I'd rather replace with that, the challenging with what did you not like? What was your most challenging?
So, Madam President or someone, would you be willing to type these up and send them to us in an email?
I, I thought Mr. Jones is allowed to do that. I'm probably not allowed to do that, am I? As long as we don't reply, right?
Yeah, I think you probably send it as long as you don't reply.
Okay.
Be as long as you have a conversation.
Okay.
I just would feel better because I'm, I know I'm missing some things. If we just had a standard, boom, boom.
I don't think we want to ask too many.
Right.
No.
It's a search for a search committee, what are you going to do to the superintendent?
Right.
Tell her superintendent, don't go there.
By the way, if you're searching a label, that's.
Yeah.
So do you want to give yourself about a week to do that, ten days? I mean, how soon do you want to try to set a special meeting? Ballpark dance. Roger, when are you going to be out or?
I have no idea, Rick.
You have no idea right now, okay.
Soon as I find out, I'll let you know, but, yeah, I'm on call right now, I can get a call any moment.
Well, Roger, you can just send the stuff too, you can email it if you're not gonna be here, your results.
That's true.
I mean, I just know that dates devoid, I believe the eleventh is the, uh, Licking County Board's dinner.
Seventh.
Seventh.
Is that the seventh?
Yeah.
Okay, so the seventh, the eleventh and twelfth is the OSBA conference.
Yes.
Correct. And then I, um, yeah, but the thirteenth and fourteenth would be fine, even the sixth.
Do I go for the sixth?
We can't set it, we can only talk about it, you said.
The seventh?
No, it'd be nice in the way here, if one day you can't send to me, but if you tell me the sixth, then I'll sit out to, I'll notice.
That would be next Wednesday, right?
Yeah, it's a week from today, I can do it.
Enough time for you to call?
Yeah.
Casey, are you available sixth?
Yes.
So are you doing it, doing it, doing it, or?
We can officially.
All county boards of education, we're not gonna go to that, or?
No, it's the seventh, right?
Yeah, no, we're going, people, I'm not going to that, but people are going to that.
Yeah, but you're setting this up on the seventh, right?
No.
We set sixth.
On the sixth, yeah, Wednesday. That's my granddaughter's birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
At what time is the five-thirty work dinner, or would you want something?
I can do as early as three-thirty, it doesn't.
I had you wait till.
Nope.
So, whatever, it's fine.
What time?
He said five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Now, are we going to just share our information that night, or do you want to collect it and then?
That's up to you, how you wanna do that, you probably should share it among yourselves.
Right, we can't share amongst ourselves.
I mean, can't we send an email?
We could send it all to Mr. Jones.
Yeah, you send to me and I can put together and send it back to you.
I would like that and then, um, I kinda feel like on the sixth, we can come in and have like a one-item thing and then leave.
Yeah.
It'd just be, it'd be discussion, action, hire a company.
We could be ready to say, this is who we're gonna hire.
That's all it's gonna be, that one thing and then discussion and action before.
Yeah.
Hopefully not more than half an hour meeting, half an hour, forty-five minutes most.
Can I send a props?
All right, so you'll type those up and get those to us and we'll have our research. When do you want answers by?
Soon as you get them done.
Okay.
Soon as you get them done, send to me, I can start accumulating together, putting one file, I'm gonna get them received, last one, I'll sit out there, buddy.
Okay.
Yeah, I may, cause I may send them as I, if that's all right.
That's fine, if you wanna do it, I do.
When you, uh, type those up, can you organize them by vendor?
Oh, yeah.
So that like all of the responses for K-12 are together and Finding Leaders?
Definitely, definitely, which ones K-12, which ones, which ones? If not, I can recruit Casey. That's why I said you wait, daddy. We're not used to in the building to be supplied.
All right, any more discussion?
All right, we're ready for adjournment, Mr. Jones?
Motion to adjourn.
Almost, we're good.
Second.
Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Motion passes, look, we are adjourned at seven forty-six PM.